Good evening and welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Education. This meeting is called to order at 4:01 PM. Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong? Dr. Alhessen? Mrs. Garza? Ms. Stewart? Mr. Critchfield?
Present. Tonight, we do not have requests addressing closed-session agenda items. And at this time, the Board will adjourn to closed session. Open session will resume at approximately 6:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We'll now reconvene to open session at 6:01 PM. Board Clerk Myra Garza will provide an update on closed-session topics.
Thank you, President Critchfield. The topics discussed in closed session were student matters, pending litigation, anticipated litigation, labor negotiations, and public employee discipline dismissal and release. The Board took action in closed session to approve readmission case 22-16-0011. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Replacement page for item 13.10 is on the back table. Tonight, we do have requests addressing agenda and non-agenda items. And I'll give the spiel. While the meetings of the governing board are not public's meetings, they are open to the public. Individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the Board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The Board will limit the total time for public input on each item to 21 minutes as per Board Bylaw 9322.2. May I have Megan Ramos up to the podium, please? Welcome.
... and one in second grade. I am here regarding safety concerns at ILC. All issues and situations have already been brought to the attention of the school principal, Ms. Almada, and the vice principal, Ms. Rojas, multiple times by myself over the past two years and by other parents at the school via email and in person. Being the type of parents that always have a plan with our kids for drop-off and pickup and who are always on time to meet our children, my husband and I were not only shocked but in full panic when we went to pick up our five-year-old daughter, who was supposed to be held in the Kinder playground and in line with her teacher, and she was not there with a daughter in Kinder. And it being her first year at ILC, it was also our first year at ILC. We split up running frantically with a two-year-old on my hip and tons of people walking in and out of the gates. I felt helpless. I was new to the school, and I knew the chances are that no one knows who myself or my daughter are, so I cannot ask anyone if they had seen her. By some crazy coincidence, the only mom I knew at the school called my husband's name and had let him know that Maddie, my daughter, was wandering outside the school gates on the sidewalk on the front side of the school. She grabbed her hand and kept her there until she could find one of us. Luckily, that person was a friend. The feeling of not knowing if your child is lost or stolen is unbearable. Safety should be a priority when we agree to send our childrens to your schools. After getting ourselves together, we emailed Principal Almada and asked her for a meeting first thing in the morning. We met with her the next day and told her what happened. My husband and I are both educators ourself. My husband has been teaching for 10 years now and has been employed at BUSD, LAUSD, and is now a consultant for ECE curriculum and professional development and a lead teacher in a dual immersion program. I am employed by ABC Unified, and I also am a professor at LACC D. Together, we founded and operated a nonprofit foundation. Through our foundation, we started an after-school program in Watts at Locke High School with the permission and support of Green Dot. We run our programs six days a week, serving 50 to 80 kids a day, sometimes well over 100 in the fall. We have not only had to propose safety procedures in school settings, but we have had to follow them ourselves, lead them, and make them a priority. Going back to safety concerns at ILC, I'm here two years later with my now-second daughter in Kinder and finding myself in a similar situation just this last week, with her being outside the gates or nearly outside the gates when she is not supposed to be. And I am not the only one. In the last two weeks, I have witnessed another mom in tears picking up her son because she didn't know where she was. And I know of another mom that has met with Almada two weeks ago with the same issue. At dismissal, the teachers have their own methods. No one is held to a certain process or expectation. They do the best they can, as they are obviously outnumbered. The current dismissal is admin opens the front gate about eight yards across, and every grade shoves and runs, other than kindergarten, every grade shoves and runs out that gate. Parents hover over the gate entrance as their children look like they are being herded, like barred animals being rushed out. Parents are stressed, hoping not to miss their child. Nearly every other elementary school in other districts all have staggered dismissal, walkie-talkies, dismissal structure that all parents are aware of and know where to find their child.
Ms. Ramos, the three minutes is expired. Do you need another 15 seconds?
Oh, I just have one more sentence.
One more sentence? Okay.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Of course, thank you.
We would like your support. We would like you to support the leadership at ILC on how they can implement a more efficient and, more importantly, safe way to dismiss our children. Currently, it can only be described as chaos.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. May I have Ms. Sylvia Jones to the podium, please? Welcome, Sylvia.
Good evening. I was happy to hear that combo classes had been eliminated at BUSD. However, my daughter told me she was in a combo class. She's a senior at Bellflower High School, and she is in an AP Calculus AB class combined with an AP Calculus BC class. I was informed that the class is primarily an AP Calculus AB class, and the Calculus BC kids are independent study students where the teacher is available to answer questions. These two classes are equivalent to Calculus I and Calculus II college-level courses. In 2023, my older daughter was in AP Physics class combined with regular physics students her senior year at Mayfair. Two students received a 1, three students received a 2, while the AP exam passing score is a 3. This was the only AP exam my daughter did not pass during her time in high school. Goal 2 of BUSD's Local Control and Accountability Plan, also known as the LCAP, states, "BUSD will provide all students with a guaranteed viable curriculum through effective data-driven instructional practices to ensure all students are college and/or career-ready." In the 2223 school year, 58% of BUSD students that took an AP exam passed with a score of 3 or higher. The following year, it went down to 53%. This is a decrease of 5%. As a measure to achieve Goal 2, Metric 17 wants to see an increase of the passing rate from the current 53% to 59% or higher in three years. This is a great goal to have, but having AP combo classes will not help achieve this goal. Having a teacher's attention divided to teach two different classes is not fair to the teacher and the students. Moreover, the students are not provided a quality and meaningful instruction when the teacher's attention is divided. The students in the Calculus II class that must learn the material on their own is not right. These students are not being provided meaningful instruction and not getting the education they deserve. The teacher and the students are being set up to fail. Even though this may not be the intention, this is what the outcome proved to be for my older daughter. An AP teacher's success rate is how many students pass the exam, and the student's success rate is if they pass the exam. That year, for my older daughter, the other AP students and the teacher failed. The state and federal government allocate funding for different levels of students. The LCAP states there are targeted programs and funding for high-need students such as academic intervention, instructional support, and enhanced learning opportunities. I did not see any targeted support or money allocated for high-achieving high school students in the LCAP. Small class size for these college-level, rigorous, fast-paced classes would get the results the LCAP and the district is seeking. The teachers and students would also have a much higher chance of success. I learned that my daughter was in a combo class from her. Are students' families informed when their child is placed in a combo class? What is the district's policy on communicating this to families? This is my second child that is in an AP combo class. Will it happen to my son as well? I want to know what will happen in the future when there are few students interested in taking an AP class. What is the threshold to keep a class open? Communication and transparency need to increase in this regard.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Have Nicole Gates to the podium, please. Welcome, Nicole.
Hello, school board members and staff. I am here today to express my disappointment with the school bond measure that was not approved to be placed on the November ballot. Our schools needed this bond money to improve the various buildings in several schools throughout the district. I have two children who attend Mayfair Middle High School. My children have said that the bathrooms need to be upgraded. My son said the bathrooms are disgusting and need to be remodeled. He said one of the urinals in the boys' bathroom at the gym is cemented over. My daughter has also said the bathrooms need to be renovated. She has even told me she waits to get home to use a bathroom. My daughter has also said that some of the permanent seats in her chorus class are broken and need to be replaced. Volunteering at my children's school, I have seen firsthand how bad some of these bathrooms are and how much we need the facilities to be improved. Moreover, our school needs to be power-washed and painted. These are just some of the concerns as a parent, homeowner, and taxpayer in this community. My son is on the wrestling team at Mayfair. He travels to other schools to compete. When he comes home after a long day of competition, he tells me how nice the bathrooms are and the facilities at these other schools. I have also seen how nice and maintained the schools are in these districts. No one likes to pay more taxes. However, I would be willing to pay more taxes to have better facilities, upgraded bathrooms, and aesthetically pleasing campuses for our students to feel proud of. I want to thank Board President Critchfield, Vice President Stewart, and Board Clerk Garza for trying to get the bond measure on the November ballot and respecting that the BUSD community should have decided to either approve or not approve the bond measure. To the board members who did not approve this bond measure, I would like you to take a tour of the different facilities at the various schools and see the state of our buildings. It is disappointing that these two board members thought our facilities were good enough. Our children and communities deserve better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gates. May I have Tiani Reyes to the podium? Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tiani Reyes. I am a mother of two kids who attend ILC, a member of this community, a homeowner in the city of Bellflower. And in light of recent events that have occurred, I am very frightened for the safety of my children. On August 22nd, I arrived to collect my children for what I thought would be another normal day. However, what I was met with was the horror that no parent should ever endure. After retrieving my youngest daughter from the kindergarten gate, I went around to the front of the school, to the first-grade gate, and was unable to locate my older daughter, who is in the first grade. I immediately turned around to face the street and thankfully was able to spot my daughter due to her bright tie-dye backpack. My heart dropped to my stomach at the thought of how my daughter was able to get all the way out of the gate, much less all the way to the sidewalk alone. I am a stay-at-home mom and very involved at that school, so I was in complete shock. I did not feel that the matter was addressed properly either. Upon requesting a meeting with the principal, I was told she had only two minutes to speak with me. Considering I did not feel it could possibly be resolved in that time, I later emailed the president of the BUSD. Thank you, Brad, for your speedy response. Although Ms. Almada did call me back for a follow-up meeting and tell me this would not happen again, I came here today due to my unease over it ever having happened, especially considering I knew firsthand that an identical incident took place two years prior to a good friend of mine, who also had a meeting with her, was told there would be a safety plan in place, yet nothing was done about it clearly. Not only am I on the PTA Board, the school site council, I assist both my daughters' teachers in the classroom as their headroom parent, and that is just at the school. I strive to be very involved in the community. I volunteer as a coach in the AYSO 106 region. I dedicate all my free time to my kid's school. And at the very minimum, I would ask that my daughter's safety and the safety of all children who attend ILC be made priority so there aren't any more safety breaches moving forward. Should this matter not properly be addressed, I regret to inform you, I might take the option that another mother on my soccer team did, in that she moved her daughter to ABC District because she also felt that Mrs. Almada was, in her words, "unapproachable, cold, and not empathetic." So, as much as I love ILC, I tried very hard, I fought to get both of my daughters in. I love the dual program. It would be very disheartening for me to have to move both of my daughters, but as a mother, which I'm not sure if our principal is a mother, but me as a mother, I am my children's advocate, and sometimes you just got to do what you got to do. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tiani. Staff, if we could please follow up on that matter that the two parents spoke about?
We will do that.
And thank you again for everybody that spoke. Do we have any corrections to this evening's agenda?
We do. We have three corrections this evening. Your agenda reads that three students will be taken in oath of office to serve as student board members. Somerset High School will not have a student this evening. Correction number two, item 13.14, Amendment to the Annual Contract Listing and Agreements, 2425 fiscal year. We are withdrawing item number one, SciTech Solutions. And correction number three, item 13.16, Award Recommendation for RFQ Number 2425-01, Cal-Shaped Plumbing Services. We are tabling this item. It will be brought back at a future meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Azavero. I would like to call Stephen Foster, Principal, Ms. Ju-
Georgia Diomarese.
That's the one. To the podium to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. Place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And I think you're going to come back up for an inspirational message in just a second. But before we get to that, it is oath of office time. At this time, I would like to invite Mayfair High School alumni in Class of 2025, Ms. Igiro Ojose? Ballpark? Thank you. And her father, Bobby Ojose, to come forward and administer the ceremonial oath of office. Welcome. Would we have, I think we'll have you come around. I think I might have said podium, but what I meant to say. All right. I think you'll face your father right there. Yep, just like that.
I, Igiro Ojose-
I, Adrian Ojose.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies-
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States-
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge-
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The, upon the duties upon which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
Great. And next, I would like to invite, and we're going to have you back up for photos in just a second, in just a second after the next oath of office. We'll invite up Bellflower High School alumni in Class of 2025, Ms. Alyssa Supnet and her mother, Luise Jacobo, to come forward and administer the oath of office.
And President Critchfield, a quick correction. I apologize for your script. It says alumni class of 2025 for both students. They are both senior class of 2025, not alumni. Wanted to correct that real quick.
Welcome.
I, Alyssa Supnet-
I, Alyssa Supnet.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies-
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith-
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution-
And the allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of California, of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully-
And that I will well and faithfully-
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon, on which I am about to enter.
Congratulations and welcome to both of you. And at this time, I'd like to invite my colleagues down for a couple of photos. And before you take off, we'll start with Ms. Ojose. Would you like to come to the podium? And is there anybody here tonight that you would like to introduce? Maybe your dad?
I would like to introduce my dad, Bobby Ojose. He is my biggest inspiration, is somebody that teaches and is very involved in, you know, school and teaching.
If I could ask, what are you looking forward to most out of being one of our board members here?
I'm looking most like, you know, forward into positive change and making a difference. So.
Well, thank you for being here. We're really looking forward to working with you.
Okay, thank you so much.
And Ms. Supnet? Come on up. Introduce yourself and your special guest.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Supnet, and I, my special guest is my mom, Luise Jacobo Supnet. She is like my best friend. She's there for me through everything that goes on in my life. It can, it's really stressful, especially right now, but having my mom around just makes everything just a little more easier to do.
And what are you looking forward to being our student board member?
I know there's a lot of concerns within the district. I'm just really thankful that I get to be here to contribute to all of this and, you know, like hear everyone out and help out with that.
We're excited to work with you. Thank you and thank you, Mom.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to get it right this time. Can I call Ms. Georgia Diomenez back to the podium to share the inspirational message? Welcome again.
Proud parents and friends. Today, I have the honor of introducing a student whose dedication, perseverance, and exceptional character have set a shining example for all of us. Allow me to introduce you to Evan Seha. Evan's story at Foster began when he was a kindergartner. Even then, Evan showed a passion for learning, his favorite subject, history. His passion came to life in a truly memorable way during fifth grade, which was his school year last year, when he took on the role of George Washington in our WAX Museum project. This is a historical grade-level project that is a tradition at Foster. This is him as Paul Revere in our Revolutionary Reen- No, sorry. This is a different project. But he was also Paul Revere in our Revolutionary Reenactment, which is also a Foster tradition. These roles were not just performances for him, but a testament to his dedication to bring history to life. Evan acknowledges that his academic journey has not always been easy. Oh, 100-year-old Evan. Reading and writing have presented challenges for him. During those challenges, he reminds himself of his favorite Bible verse, Philippians, Chapter 4, Verse 13. "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me." This verse is a source of strength and motivation that has guided him and fueled his success. Evan's achievements extend beyond the classroom. His role as the student council treasurer exemplifies his leadership and commitment to our school community. He leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance at morning assembly daily. On the field, whether it's football or baseball, Evan demonstrates the same level of dedication and sportsmanship that he brings to his studies. He has aspirations of playing in the major leagues. And I just found out tonight that even after practices, he wants to come home and show off the things that he learned on his saxophone from music class. In the classroom, Evan is not only an excellent student, but also a model of active participation and respect. His teachers speak highly of his enthusiasm and his kindness towards others. It was their nomination of him that brings us here today. It is no surprise that his favorite aspect of Foster is our community. Evan cherishes the kindness and support he receives from his teachers and peers, and he reciprocates that warmth and respect in all of his interactions. Evan, we are incredibly proud of you. Your journey at Foster is a shining example of what it means to strive for excellence and to uplift those around you. Keep reaching for the stars, and remember that you have a whole community cheering you on every step of the way. Congratulations, Evan. Here's to many more achievements and to the bright future that lies ahead of you.
Thank you very much. Evan, is there anything you would like to say at the podium? Got some shout-outs? Who are you here with tonight? Thanks for being here, bud.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm here with my family and my coach for football. I just want to thank, like, everyone that has helped me in my whole life, throughout my short life for now. But without them, none of this would be possible, so I'm just really thankful for them and everything that I'm so super blessed for that has ever happened for me in my life. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Armstrong had a great idea. Evan, would you come up here to take a photo with us and bring your family with you? Would that be okay? Oh, and the coach. Not going to forget you. Not gonna forget you. As well as Georgia Diomedes. And just everybody, just come on down. All right, you all heard it. Evan said he's gonna come do the pledge of allegiance for us next meeting, so. Hold you to it. All right, at this time, we'd like to welcome our student board reporters. Welcome back. Who do we start with here? We have a new reporter representing Bellflower High School this year, Steven Martinez. Welcome, Steven. And before you share your board report, can you share a little bit about yourself and what motivated you to represent Bellflower High School?
Hi, good evening. My name is Steven Martinez and I'm proud to represent Bellflower High School tonight. For elementary, I attended ILC where I was a part of the Pioneer Class for the Dual Immersion Program. Now a junior, I serve as the ASB Board Reporter and actively participate in several clubs and programs, including ASB, CSF, Apex, and the Class of Twenty Six and the Early College Program. My role this school year as a student board reporter is to share the exciting events, accomplishments, and initiatives happening at Bellflower. From student achievements to community involvement, I'm here to highlight how we strive to make Bellflower a better place for all. In addition, after high school, I plan to attend the Air Force Academy to further my education.
Nice, well, welcome. It's nice to have you. And now you can jump right into your, the, why, I guess you wouldn't. Do you have more of a report or no? You do? Okay, so now it's all you.
Starting with our past events, this year we started off our school year by introducing our students back to campus. ASB cheer and lean crew leaders greeted students at both entrances at the gates by lining up to help students feel more comfortable and prepare to come back to school. As well as throughout the first week and a half of school, ASB provide lemonade, otter pops, and lollipop to students to help welcome them back. That is seen on the left side. And on the right side, our pride assembly. At our pride assembly, we helped both students and staff feel more comfortable coming back into the school year. We played games where students and teachers would help each other compete against, compete against another team. As well as teachers played I Have or Have Not to help their students get to know them better. In the assembly, we also learned the Buck Eight Clap and witnessed a live demonstration of the Inner Quest K-9 unit as seen in the bottom left picture. Moving on, we also hosted our annual club rush where students at the beginning of the school year can sign up for a variety of clubs that they're interested in. Over thirty-five clubs at the school participated to show off and encourage students to learn and join clubs, but in general to familiarize themselves with what those clubs are and what they do. Now moving on to our most recent event. This Tuesday, we held our back to school night where there were an additional twenty organizations set up where parents and students could receive information on various topics, ranging from mental health and stress to parent involvement through PTSD. In addition, parents who attend help develop a better understanding of their students' education and can engage with their students' teachers and administration. Now moving on to our upcoming events. Tomorrow, we will be hosting our Buck Tailgate, which with the ticket, students will be able to receive a pizza, a drink, chips, and a free Buck Pride t-shirt. And ASB will also be providing a bunch of games that students can play with others and their friends. I see on the left side, that was last year. We also have homecoming and our homecoming rally coming up. At the homecoming rally, clubs can showcase dances and students can engage through a variety of games. We also showcase a skit where the top five candidates for king and queen alongside the prince and princesses candidates perform. The rally will be held on October 3rd, and the homecoming dance for ninth through twelve graders will be hosted on October 5th. And for any parent or student who wants to stay up to date with what's currently happening at Bellflower, they can find it on our school Instagram page, We're at Bellflower, or on our ASB Instagram, What's Up at B M S. They also may get information through our Facebook account or also get information through our Bellflower High, through Bellflower High.org. In addition, students can go to their grade level goal classrooms to receive information on events. Thank you.
Awesome. First one down. You nailed it, man. I probably should know, what's the Buck Eight Clap? What is it?
So it's our clap that we do normally during football games and sometimes during rallies, which is just to motivate, in a sense.
Okay. Can you lead us in it right now? Is that too much for the first day?
I don't personally remember it right now.
So just know. I'm gonna have, I'm gonna remember. I'm gonna have you do it next time.
Okay.
Great job.
Thank you.
All right. Lennox Scott, welcome back. Before you start, why don't you tell a little bit about yourself, then you all hop into the board report.
Okay. Well, my name is Lennox Scott. I'm a junior here at Mayfair. I also attended ILC in the same class as Steven, actually, in the first ever Dual Immersion Program. I'm very happy to be back here to greet you all and, yeah. So of course, good evening, President Clinchfield, members of the board, interim superintendent Ms. Azvedo, district colleagues and all in attendance. I would like to welcome you all back from hopefully a very long and enjoyable summer break and hopefully we're all ready to put in that work now. Now, to start off, you can see our new motto at the bottom left, hashtag Soon247. And this motto was basically created to really depict that the qualities that Mayfair instills in their students is not only for school time, but also their day-to-day living. So qualities like show your respect and on your actions can not only better you as a student, but in the long run as a person as well. Now, speaking about putting in that work, we had faculty and teachers doing their summer preparations. You can also see we had multiple Mayfair preview days for all grade levels to, you know, really get their schedules together and get ready and take their school pictures. Also on the bottom left, we have our newly color-coded, might I add, bathroom passes, really to just help organize our students in case they need to roam the campus. We also had presentations from alum Josh Childress. And finally, a behavioral intervention flow chart put together by our staff. Next, we had our Welcome Back Assembly. Along, yeah, our Welcome Back Assembly. Glimpse of that in the video. This was actually, I believe, the middle school assembly, and that's one of our English teachers, Ms. Agary. I know. You would've thought she participated in the breakdancing 2024 Olympics, yeah? Wow, great moves. Ms. Agary, yeah. Make sure to remember her name. Now with that, we also had our first football game against Yorbelinda. And then also we had class expectations presentations presented to all of our students by staff members, where they basically just, you know, reiterated some expectations that we have here at Mayfair and also introduced some new staff that we have as well.
You wanna watch it again?
Thank you. And then last night, we also had our back to school night where parents could come and really just gain some insight on what they should expect for their students, you know, school year here at Mayfair. We also had our clubs and sports programs hustling out there last night, really trying to raise some money for their, you know, very well-respected programs as well. Now lastly, looking back, of course, we had a great start to our school year. I mentioned the Soon's expectations meetings put on by our staff. We also have the start of our CIF fall sports, which you can see in the list. Of course, we had a back to school night last night. And to kick off our senior events, we actually had senior sunrise in the back of our gymnasium. And then finally, I think we've already had about three football games, don't quote me. But yeah. Now looking ahead, we have our milk bucket game, the thirteenth of Ron Year. You can see our milk bucket trophy, which we currently hold, I think for about, I don't know, maybe six years. It's, I'm losing count. But hopefully we can make it a seventh. We also have AP scholar celebrations where we will be celebrating all of our AP scholars where they were able to pass the AP test. Now, not looking too far ahead, we have our homecoming game and dance coming up, more middle school events, and then a couple of updates to our partially new Mingo system. And then, of course, continued staff development and fall sports updates. Now, please make sure to follow us at all of our socials. And last, last thing to say that this will unfortunately be my last board report as the board reporter. I know, we do have teachers on deck, in case anybody sheds a tear. But I will be handing it off to my fellow monsoon and very capable Gil Friedman, as you can see in the back corner. And I just wanted to say that this has been a great experience from, you know, listening to what other people have going on in their respective campuses to, you know, teacher and parent complaints, maybe we could say that. And yeah, I just wanna thank, you know, everybody here for, you know, truly trying to get our district to be a better place for students like me to learn in. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lennox. And representing Somerset High School, Julian Becerra. Welcome back. And before you jump in, I want you to share a little bit about yourself, maybe some breakdancing skills, you know, whatever you'd like.
Thank you, President Clinchfield, thank you. My name is Julian Becerra. I am a senior at Somerset High School. And this is my second year here doing this, these presentations for the board, and I'm really excited to be back here again. So, yeah, that's a little bit about me, but now let's go back to the presentation. Of course, good evening, everybody in my audience, President Clinchfield, members of the board, interim superintendent Ms. Azvedo. Welcome here tonight. My name is Julian Becerra again. And this is my presentation, my board report for Somerset High School. So to begin with, we have new additions to our school. After Mr. Higgins retired as our president, as our, I'm sorry, as our principal, we had a new principal and she is, of course, our Mrs. Jacques. She is a wonderful principal and she's doing a great job so far. And we also have Mrs. Garrison, who is our education specialist. Lastly, we have Ms. Vitale, who is our, what's it called again? Intermission teacher. I don't know what that is, but. And we also, aside from new staff, we also have new additions. Before the school year ended, Somerset had painted their Foursies on our classrooms, which, of course, our Foursies are critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity. And last, and recently, we just added a new billboard on front of our school. Speaking of new additions, we also have a new class hosted by Ms. Egan. We have our class Journalism, which is basically a school newspaper. Students come here and organize new information worldwide and in school. And it's lots of, and we have lots of fun on writing and talking about what we can do. And we also have a website in the making. And hopefully we can soon launch it to our students. And hopefully, if I, if I'm correct, maybe we might do live streams about school games from Mayfair and Bellflower. We had our back to school night. It was very, very much fun, a lot of fun. A lot of parents came, a lot of students came, and I think it's because we had tacos serving over there. Yeah. Yeah, we had tacos there, the pollo salad and pastor. It was really good, though we needed some limon. Yeah, yeah. It was very fun, a lot of creativity from the students, last presentations. Students got to meet, our parents got to meet up with the teachers and we were all, I suppose we were all satisfied. And this year, we have our superintendent student advisory council members, which includes myself, Joseph Kiwi, Alia Alamio, and Elizabeth Nunez. Now we have our garden. We've had our garden last year, but today, this year, we have it again. And we also have a program provided by Enrich L.A. And this is our ranger Lily, who gives us lessons in Egan's class every Tuesday. She tells us information like how plants have their role in nature, a lot of agriculture, and it's very fun stuff. And I think we're gonna get to some cooking. ASB has provided two activities recently. Our first activity was water splash, which is a balloon fight we had. It was very fun. We all got wet and our Mr. Cubic was very much prepared with his shield. Very nice. And we also had a three-legged race, which consisted of two students wrapping a rope between their legs. And of course, it's three-legged race. And we had, we had lots of fun, a little bit of pain, but it was fun. Sorry. Many of us fell down. And I think lastly, we had our most exciting event, America's Got Talent. We had lots of fun meeting up the famous hosts over there and, and honestly, it was, we were all excited, but the only thing that missed out was the performance. And all we got to see was a bunch of booze and excited, because there was no performance. We were just seeing who's nominated and who's going to be answering the semifinalists. But yeah, most of us had a great time. So this concludes my report. And upcoming events will be on September 18th. We have a field trip, a hike to Crystal Cove. September 16th starts our Block Three. September 12th, picture day. And from September 20th to the October 14th, we have our intercession. However, there will be, classes will be in session, still be in session from the 23rd to the 27th, who, who students will be able to gain more credits if they wish. But other than that, they get to have a three-week break. This concludes my report. Thank you very much. My name is Julian Becerra and I wish you all a very wonderful evening and night. Thank you.
Steven, Lennox, Julian, great job. Lennox, sorry to see you go in. Thank you for bringing the tissues. Appreciate that. And Gil, it would be exciting to see you here. So you'll be here next meeting. I don't think we've done a photo with our student reporters, so if you guys would be so kind to come up front and colleagues will go down and take a photo with our student reporters. reporters. All right, and you guys know this spiel, it's not on the script tonight, but if you have homework or things you have to attend to, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting, but you're more than welcome to if you'd like. It is now time for stakeholder communications. Can I have BTA President, Ms. Carrie McDaniel, come on down to the podium? Welcome, Carrie.
No, I think. Oh, sorry. Good evening, Intern Superintendent Miss Azaveto, Board President Crichfield, members of the board, members of the cabinet, and members of the audience. That feels really loud. It has been a busy week for me this week as BTA President. We are appreciative of the opportunity of the Dark Blue Buyback this year, as teachers found it very valuable, and it was time well spent. However, I've been fielding emails about why teachers weren't paid for the hours that they worked this summer. Some sites offered site-based PD on time cards, some teachers attended the Dark Blue PD days, none of them have been paid. I've been in communication with the district office and board members, and while I realize that this is the first time we have done it, it has also given, it also gave a lot of teachers the expectation that they would get some extra pay in September. I say this not because people didn't work hard to process the time cards, but I just think that there were things that maybe we should have thought a little bit more about. What was the expectation for paying teachers for this summer work? What was the timeline for paying them? And this is hard for me, because I feel like we all work hard, all of you, and we talk, and we text, and we email, but I also represent our teachers, and I felt that I needed to address this tonight. Money is a sensitive topic, and while I believe it wasn't intentional, there were a whole lot of teachers who counted on that extra money. To completely change the subject, I would like to say that I heard really good things about the Standing Committee meeting yesterday. I haven't officially looked at the notes quite yet, but I have heard all-around good things, and I appreciate Ms. Ulla for her guidance and knowledge, and working with our team to make special education in our district better. They've even agreed to meet more this year, instead of the usual and contract number of three times. I think they're at six days, which is crazy, but good. I hope this will help solve problems together and fix them before they become a big problem. I'm continuing to meet with site principals. Since the last board meeting, I've been to Ramona and ILC. BTA officially joined PTA at all of the sites, as one of our goals this year is to be more active in our community. My Vice President, Dan Fong, who is our Political Action Committee Chair, worked with CSCA to interview the three candidates running in District Three. Open houses are happening across the district, and I know that our teachers always enjoy seeing all of you come to their classrooms. I've heard from Miss Azaveto that the district is working on trying to solve the AC issues, and I know that from Facebook, there are a lot of them, so thank you for that. We appreciate your support in offsetting some of the burden of the rising insurance costs. BTA has three bargaining dates this month, and we hope they will be productive. I appreciate Dr. Smith and his effort to be organized and ready for bargaining, and I look forward to meeting the new CBO next week. Finally, I appreciate all of you for your countless hours in running this district. I know it isn't easy, and I know that there are a lot of challenges, but if we keep students as the reason why we are all here, we will get through the tough times. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Carrie. Can I have PTA President, Ms. Linda Morgan, up to the podium, please? Welcome, Linda, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Board President Crichfield, members of the board, interim Superintendent Azaveto, cabinet and community members. I do not have a slide presentation this evening, and, but I actually want to thank Carrie for accommodating me at the last meeting. I know that was short notice, pictures were just too cute not to share. And for those that were hoping to have their names up on this presentation tonight, I will, I promise I will have that next month, or at the next meeting. But thank you Brad Crichfield, who just joined, and BTA President Carrie McDaniel on her board as well, as well as Bonnie Carter. I know you did it on Totem online, but I saw your name. Thank you again for joining all of our PTAs, appreciate it. And again, I will promise I will have a slide up there. So, everyone had an exciting start to the school year. Our PTA volunteers have been busy and are excited about their plans and goals for this year. We're looking forward to making this a successful, but also fun year for our students. Besides the many fun back-to-school activities, they've also kicked off their membership drive, spiritware sales, and fundraisers, hosting book fairs, meet the PTA events, family game nights, and much more. They're conducting their board and association meetings, and are hopefully having monthly meetings with their principals. Tomorrow, I myself get to stop in the principal meeting to kind of personally introduce myself and PTA, and to hopefully, you know, encourage communication, collaboration, especially on the family engagement part. So, I'm excited and appreciate the opportunity, and I promise I won't take long, as you'll know, I talk fast, so. BTA will be hosting, will be hosting, the Candidates Forum for the upcoming School Board Election. It'll be held on September 26th at 6:30 PM here in the boardroom. We always partner with the League of Women Voters, who will actually be moderating the event. It's a collaboration that works well. We're both 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations. We are nonpartisan, meaning we do not support or oppose any particular candidate. The forum is an opportunity to educate our voters about the candidates, and it's an opportunity for the candidates to share their vision and goals for BUSD. This is the first time that we're dealing with the trustee areas, so it makes it a little more awkward. We're not able to invite all the candidates running. As a 501(c)(3), we're only able to host the Candidates Forum as long as there are at least two candidates running for the same seat. So, all candidates for trustee area three have been invited. Ms. Garza, however, who's running for trustee area four, is running unopposed. So unfortunately, we couldn't invite you to participate. I know you wanted to. We would have loved to have had you, just couldn't find a way around that, I'm sorry. Last, catching up on the last few other things, I still wanted to thank Lisa and the board for allowing me to send two representative to the Welcome Back Breakfast on my behalf. Sorry I've missed that, but I heard a lot of great things, so thank you. And just scheduled my meetings with Mrs. Azaveto for the next few months. I appreciate the updated logo, the goals and actions, and the new theme, Unified in Purpose. We're all here to support our students and staff, connecting our families, and building our community. So, you know, I know sometimes we get busy and caught up in everything, it's nice to be reminded of why we do what we do, so I appreciate that. Appreciate all that's been happening in BUSD and the collaboration, and I look forward to what's still to come. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Linda, thank you, Carrie, and thank you, Michelle. Appreciate all of our stakeholder input. And you'll notice on the agenda, we changed the name to Stakeholder Input, but each month, if you have a presentation, always come. We always appreciate hearing from you. And I will be looking for my name on that slide, for sure. I should have been first, I know, I know. I told them she's gonna give me a hard time if I'm not up on that slide. And real quick, before we move on to, I just want to give a quick shout out to Christian. We just upgraded our microphone systems, and that's why it might be a little bit louder right there. They put in a lot of work to put these systems in, and very impressed, and thank you for all the work that you guys did to make this all happen, so thank you, guys. All right, moving on to Superintendent's Report, Ms. Azaveto.
Yes, thank you. This evening, I'd like to thank both Bellflower and Mayfair High Schools for hosting their annual back-to-school night. I enjoyed visiting all the classrooms and seeing our families and students back on campus. I look forward to visiting our elementary back-to-school nights next week, we have lots of them going on next week. I'd also like to take a moment tonight to introduce our new Chief Business Officer, Renee Arcus, to the BUSD community. Renee has a wealth of experience in finance, and we're very happy to have her support our team. And that is it for this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Azaveto. Ms. Arcus, would you like to say anything, introduce yourself?
Thank you very much for the warm welcome that I've had here at Bellflower USD these past solid three days that I've been here. I'm real appreciative of the support of the board and the support of cabinet, and actually all of the staff members that have been here to support me so far. And I'm, it's been an exciting three days, and I am looking forward to what is next. So, thank you again for having me, and I'm super appreciative and very happy to be here.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
All right, it is now time for discussion items. Right back to you, Ms. Azaveto.
Thank you. So tonight, our Director of Fiscal Services, Mr. George Martinez, will update you on our unaudited actuals.
Good evening, President Crichfield, fellow board members, Superintendent Azaveto, cabinet members. As you can see up on the screen, I am here to present our, a short presentation on our unaudited actuals for 2324. This is something that you guys are well aware of, we do this every year for you, so we're gonna go through it and then field any questions as you see them coming up, or after, if you'd like. So, just as a quick summary, the unaudited actuals, this is a lot of information on this first slide, but it is the annual statement that we prepare. This has not been formally audited by our external team yet, this is just something we prepare for your review. That is due to the fact that under ED Code 42100, it is due to the SPI, the Superintendent of Public Instruction, and the county office by September 15th. So, we have to prep something for you, and then after that, our external team will come in and audit and make adjustments as they see fit. This is our year-end financial data, so this goes from the 1st of July through the 30th of June. In this case, it will be the 1st of July of 2023 to June 30th, 2024, and it is our actuals. It is what was spent, what was received, and this will be a summary of that, since I know you have the entire packet that you guys have already gone through. This is just a foundation, this is something to give a base for the auditors, our external team, to come in and look at, so that they can do their formal official audit that will then, may have some changes, may not, may have some adjustments based on what they see. And this is something that you are very familiar with, the budget cycle. It changes year to year just based on the dates and the fiscal year dates. We are just highlighting where we are. So, as you can see, it's pointing to September 2024 of the unaudited actuals. This is the report we're presenting to you today. There are a few couples, there are steps coming up. You will go through the first interim, we go through the governor release of his state budget, it is the same cycle year after year, this is more just informational, so you are aware of where we are tonight. And this is where we get into the summarized detail of our data. So, as you can see, this slide refers to our revenues as a whole. We have three columns up, four columns up there for you. The first column that says audited actuals, those are the numbers that came after our external team came in and looked at our figures and said, here are your adjustments, here are your changes for revenue, these are the final numbers they landed on. The third column, estimated actuals, is what was presented to you a few months ago, based on where we thought we were headed. The fourth column, which is unaudited actuals, is where we actually landed as of June 30th, the revenue amounts that we actually received through June 30th. Once again, that could change when our external team does come, but this is what we have in our system as of June 30th that we're reporting to you today. And the final column is just to show you the differences between where we landed on June 30th of 2024 versus where our auditor said we landed on June 30th of 2023. Same date, just a different year, so you can see where the changes happened, if there was growth or decline in that revenue stream. As you can see, there is a little bit of growth based on what we see. We ended last year at 215, almost $216 million, and as of June 30th of this year, we show almost $221, which is a difference of about $5 million in growth overall. You can see on the right, the fourth column, that that happens in different areas, there is some loss in our state revenue, but there are growth in our other areas. Our LCFF revenue, which is attached to our LCAB, our federal revenue, and our other local revenue showed growth this year, so that is where that increase led to, that came from. And then the next slide will be your general fund expenditures, so this is what we actually spent. The theory behind this is actually the same, so you will see what our auditors finalized. Column one, column two, I apologize, column three is what we presented to you at the last presentation. Column four is what I show in our actuals and our books as of June 30th. Column five, once again, is just the differences between June 30th, 2024, and June 30th, 2023. So, going through that fairly quickly. Column two shows that last year at June 30th, 2023, we had spent $195 million in total. That includes salaries for certificated staff, classified, their benefits, supplies, services, any capital outlay, big purchases, any of those items. This year, you can see that has grown by about $20.5 million. You can see that the large growths are in capital outlay, as well as our salaried accounts and our services. So, those are contracts, those are services that we don't provide, that we go out to get through other vendors. But the big picture on this is that, as a whole, one year to the next, we have grown over $20 million in expenses, over 10%. And then the next slide is just a summary to show you, this removes the audited numbers. We are just comparing what we presented to you a few months ago, where we had told you that we were possibly going to deficit spend where we thought we were heading. So, that is column two. At that point in time, our beginning fund balance, what we have in our savings account, our fund balance, was $130 million. We had presented to you that we believed we were gonna overspend in our budget by $33.5 million, almost, leading to a reduction in our fund balance, bringing it down to $97 million. Now that we've gotten to the end of the year, June 30th, and we actually look at what happened and what we actually spent, we see that the $133 changes because of the audit adjustments that the auditor had presented to us, that's our new starting point, so it was actually a little bit higher than I had projected at the end of the year. We also underspent this year by $4.7 million, so our ending fund balance, instead of going down to 97, actually went up to $138.7. So, that is a growth of 30% from what I presented a few months ago to you, as a whole. So, we have grown in our ending fund balance due to different factors, the biggest one being that we took in more revenue than we actually spent in this current year. And then, this is just a breakdown of how that $138 is broken down. As you are well aware, we do have some items that are considered non-spendable, so that is the first column, that is $4 million, that includes our prepaid items, those are your textbook adoptions, things that we're paying for out in the future, we set that money aside right up front. Second line is your restricted programs, so those are all of your categorical items, title programs, any special education programs that we have requirements, that we have to follow that, those will fall into this category. So, as you can see, out of that $138, $43 million of that is required to be spent on a certain project, a certain type of resource, a certain type of expense. Then we get down to the committed items. This is where we ask for the board's input, these are suggestions that we present to you for your input and your ideas. So, the three categories that we've selected, as you can see, are supplemental and concentration fund, funding, so that has a balance of $33.2 million. The deferred facilities, which I know you discuss and see the plan, we are setting in there, almost $30 million. And then reserve for mitigation of economic uncertainties, that could be loss of revenue, that could be increased costs that we don't know about, that we're not anticipating for the future, we've set 22.3 in there. And then, I know that kind of ties into that next line, which is reserve for economic uncertainty. That reserve is a 3% minimum requirement that the state requires us to have, so we delineate that there specifically, so that they know we at a minimum have that above and beyond, we have the other items that we've set aside. And as you are well aware, we have that 10% maximum. And as you are well aware, we have that 10% maximum. That is just set in there, so you know what that is. Anything above that 21.2 million has to be committed. That would be through your guidance. So, anything above that, anything below that number, we wouldn't have to. What ends up happening is everything we've committed, if you would like to continue with that, and you can see that our leftover unassigned, which is the next line down, shows that there is a zero balance. That is just to say, we have $138 million. We are setting it somewhere, and that is what the intended use of it is. So, the first three lines, if you add those together, will end up adding up to the 138.7. And then, the final slide for you guys to review is just our next step. So, that kind of follows your cycle. You will see on here that we are stating that this has to go to the county office by the 15th, so that's why we presented here at this board meeting for you. The next item would be December 14th is our first interim, which will actually start showing what we're actually spending and doing and budgeting for 2425, which is the year we're currently in. Right now, we're discussing previous year, but then we'll move into the next one pretty, fairly quickly. And the other points are just highlights for you to see where we're heading in the future and what is to be anticipated. And then, it is open for any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. I'll now open it to comments, questions from the board, and we'll try to work this new system here. Ms. Armstrong?
Hi, thank you so much for that presentation. I was looking at this, and boy, I don't know whether to put my glasses on or take them off, but I was looking at, you know, our total revenues for last year was like 220, 220 million, and we spent like 215 million, right?
That is correct. For 2020, for 2324, we took in 221 almost, and we've spent close to 216.
So, we came out positive really because of those ESAR funds, you think?
We have used a lot of ESAR funding to cover a lot of other costs. Bonnie's been very helpful with all those. We are moving other items around as we see fit, but the biggest, the biggest was that we did receive a lot of COVID funding that we are trying to use first.
Yes, and it's about the, a lot of that stuff. I've been watching it, been watching it for years, and we gotta spend it because it's gonna expire, expire.
That is correct, and that deadline is coming soon. Technically, the deadline is 9:30 for encumbrances, and we have until the end of the calendar year to fully spend it out as of now.
Okay. So, I was looking at the 2425, and we're projecting revenues of 185 million, but we're expecting to expend more, 215 million?
That is also correct. So, in the out year, we are not getting any of that other funding that we just mentioned. So, now we are pretty much at our base, which includes just your LCFF, your regular state revenue, special education AB 602, your title programs. But based on our projection, I do not foresee us spending any less than we did this year. There are also additions that are being done. There are more staffing, there are things of that nature happening. So, I do not foresee us spending any less than we did in the current year. That is how we build our future year. What I can tell you is, on the revenue side, we go based off of what the state has given us, the LCFF calculator, those numbers. That I, I don't, we don't have full control over. We can see it. It could change. We could get more revenue in the future. We could get less. It could get shifted. They could bring in other sources of revenue. But right now, based on what we know, we are anticipating that revenue, and we are anticipating at least the same amount of expenses, if not more.
So, I'm, I have to ask this one, then I know we got it.
Go for it.
But I'm wondering, how are we going to spend less when we've added so many positions? And, you know, and we have the decline in enrollment, and we have the step-in column increase, and, and we're, and I'm not, I don't even really want to even mention negotiations, but how are we gonna spend less?
And I don't anticipate that either. That is why my budget is built out that way. My budget is saying, I anticipate we are spending more, not less. So, that is why that is presented to you. I know it's not on any of these slides, but I know where you're referencing to the, to the current year we're in, and that is why we build it that way. The anticipation is not that we are spending less based on what we know today. If the guidance of the board changes and things shift, then that could change. But as of today in our budget, I am stating that we are, we are in the belief that we will be spending more next year.
And then, we're running out of one-time money that's been helping us out.
That will expire very soon.
And I just, how come we didn't have, like,
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. We're gonna move on to Dr. Hussin now.
Okay, just one, but I'm just saying.
Dr. Hussin, go for it.
I don't understand, because I don't, I don't have the information for next year.
I'll circle back around. Dr. Hussin?
Yes, thank you. It kind of falls in line with Board Member Armstrong's asking question, because you had stated where our growth of expenditures has increased 10%. So, when you're looking at the 10% growth expenditures, how does that kind of fall in line with our future deficit spending that was outlined for '25, '26? Has that number then jumped up?
So, we're discussing just the salary and the cost of our staffing. Yes, that number does jump up in our projections. We anticipate there being a step-in column increase. We do increase those figures in our budget for the out year, because as we all know, not everybody's at the highest step. Not everybody's earning the most that they can. So, we build that into our budgets for the out years.
So, so when is that budget outline coming through that shows us future year projections?
The multi-year projections, so the initial ones that we had were presented at the adopted budget, which was a few months ago. So, those included those figures there, and that's where the initial starting point was, that they were presented for multi-years. It was three, the year we were adopting, plus two more years out into the future.
Right, but you said that's, that's already changed based on our current expenditures. So, I'm asking, when can we see that?
It could change. We can work on something for you to get you some figures to see where we're heading, if you'd like to see that.
I would. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hussin. Vice President Stewart?
I see on here that deferred facilities was 29 million, correct?
Correct.
And what did you say we would be a little bit short this year? How much? Approximately? What you think, or you project?
We're anticipating to be close in the range of deficit spending, based on what we know today, about $25 million.
Awesome. So, I just wanted to make a comment to my colleagues. 30, 29 million in deferred facilities. Sounds like we should have maybe went for a bond, because that would have covered this amount that we're short. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. And George, I know you haven't been in this position for, for a long time here, but when it comes to projecting to be short, that big red number kind of, it bothers me. As far as accuracy, we thought we were gonna be 33 million short, and we ended up being 4.7 up. So, accuracy-wise, we were about negative 800% as far as if that was our score. Can you tell me what's, what happened there, and then what's changed?
So, in those figures at that time, we also include carryover amounts. So, that is money that we've received at some point in time, but may not have been spent. For example, we received something three years ago revenue, but it wasn't spent. The state allows us to carry that over. I do not get any revenue next year for that, but I still have to budget those expenses. If that continues happening, we allow the sites to budget their carryover, but they don't spend it. We are showing that we are anticipating spending that, but if that doesn't actually come to fruition, that carryover now belongs to 2425. You will see this increase in those budgets if that is the case again, which it is. Once the auditors finalize their report and say, "We agree to your numbers," now you can release those carryovers to your sites. Then, they budget, and it now creates a larger budget for you, which at first interim, second interim, we may present you with another larger deficit than 30 million, based on whatever is now newly being budgeted.
So, nothing's changed?
That, we are working through. We have a new CBO. We're looking into options. She will be a guiding light for us with that, to see if we will continue that practice, which is the practice that I've been here almost seven years, and we've done that. But with Renee here now, we may be looking at other options.
Yeah, I see, I see that, being conservative with your budgets and making sure that we are, you know, being fiscally responsible and not overspending is good. Just 33 million off of like what we're saying, you know, the word estimated is pretty, you know, it's a, you know.
I completely understand, and I know you, you've been around. I've been here the entire time with you guys through this, so I, I hear what you're saying, and I believe those are the discussions I'm having with Renee, of maybe our budget methodology should shift now at this point. And those are things that she will be helping me with in the future.
I mean, you're the numbers people. I'm not gonna make any decision on, on that front of what we should, but I will say from a, from a budgeting perspective, when, if we're gonna spend this year's money on this year's kids, we have to, we can't be afraid of being $33 million short, and at the end of the year realize we had that money and we could have spent it on this year's kids and seen this carryover. So, I know you understand the concern. I understand past practices, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna be looking out for that number next time we get this report.
Understood.
Any other questions for, oh, Ms. Garza?
Thank you, President Crichfield. My question, and you probably, we've probably heard this before. I just need to kind of confirm it. What will happen to any of the leftover funding from ESAR or COVID grants?
So, that funding, if not expended by the deadline, should be returned. So, our plan and our intent is not to, and use it for the benefit of the students. There is a plan in place right now that we are working through. Some of those items include the playgrounds. We're looking to see if we can get more technology. We're looking at other items, but our intent as a district is not to return and to use the funding for the benefit of our students.
Okay, and I'm, I'm gonna assume that that will happen. Thank you. So, but if it doesn't, are there any penalties that we would have to pay or incur?
There are no penalties. It would just be returning the excess funding. If we get to that point, there also is the option of asking for an extension. We are hoping not to even get to that point. We're hoping to get it done by the deadline, so that we can have the items. Chris, Bonnie, everyone is helping us with items to see what would benefit the district and the students. So, we're working with them through that in order to meet the deadlines, get the items here, pay them out, and get the stuff for our kids as needed.
When would you know that?
We are working through it now, so I'm hoping to have, our plan that we have with Bonnie and the team shows that it is going to be fully spent. Now, it is actually getting the vendors to work with us to get those items on time.
Okay, perfect. Could we possibly, Ms. Azvedo, get an update on what the plan is going forward? Just what is kind of like the remainder of what we need to spend that funds for?
Yes.
I can work with Ms. Carter to get an answer to that.
We can give you that. I can also give you a closely accurate number. We have, based on what's left over right now, we only have about $200,000 left to get through ESAR, through all the ESAR funds, based on the plans that we have in place.
Okay, and when we get that report, is it possible to give, not necessarily actual dates, but maybe estimated dates of when that would happen?
Yeah, we can, we can work through that and get you guys those items.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do have one more question. Ms. Armstrong, do you have another question? Okay. Okay, thank you. I do have a question on the cafeteria fund. I know we, we implemented a spend-down plan. Can you give me an update on that?
So, there was a plan implemented for that. The plan requires that you spend down. They don't want you to have more than a certain percentage of reserve. We're above that. So, that plan then gets sent into CDE. They review, they agree or disagree. So, there are multiple items in there that Candace, our Director of Nutrition, has stated she's going to be working through to bring down that balance. That includes staffing, that includes renovations, that includes better food products, better items. And then, as that's happening, the state will monitor us to make sure that we are following that plan, and that those things are happening year over year, so that that balance is up slowly going down.
What is that percent?
The percent that they want is for you to have no more than six months' reserve.
Six months' reserve? So, I think policy is 10% of, what is the, the policy on the cafeteria fund? Does anybody know off the top of their head? Now, nobody, nobody memorized it?
The policy as far as how much we can retain?
Yes, I think it's 10% of one year's cost, right?
Yeah, so that's, that's where that six, six months comes out. So, on our end, we, that's how it's calculated. You see how much you spent for the year. They see, "Oh, you should have this much. You actually have this much." After a few years, then they start discussing it with us and saying, "We need a plan."
But the policy, I believe, is 10% of an annual cost.
Of your annual expenses.
And do you know what that number is?
This year, we spent, I believe we spent, I will, I believe we spent closely, close to $3 million.
$3 million, so it'd be 10% of $3 million?
About $300,000 or something.
300 of reserve, and what's our current fund in that balance?
We are anticipated to end that fund this year with 7.6.
7.6, and then estimated next year, I think closer to 9.
Correct. It is estimated based on current expenses to continue growing.
It's supposed to be close to 300,000, but it's sitting at, we'll just call it, a lot more.
Correct.
And the spend-down plan, it sounds like a, like a slow roll plan. It's gonna take some time. How long will it take to spend that much money down?
The implementation of that plan, they'd like to happen as soon as you get it approved, but the entirety of it could take years, depending on what is in the plan. It could be immediate, if you're just gonna do a lot of renovations and things of that sort. But the intent is that they want to see you actually spending down at least something every year, based on whatever your plan states you're going to be doing.
So, does this budget reflect that type of spend-down plan?
The budget that we approved, the budget that you approved, does not, because we are still working through some of the items. Some of the items that are, that are projected to happen through that plan are bigger-ticket items that have to get approvals and things of that sort. So, they did not show up in the budget, but they will show up in the actuals if they come to fruition.
What are the bigger-ticket items?
Large renovations in some of the kitchens. We are changing staffing numbers, staffing hours. That has to go through unions and things of that sort, so they were not included because they haven't been approved. But once they are approved, those numbers will change the figures in the, in the budget. That will be presented at first interim or second if those are all approved.
From that fund, which I know a lot of it's pretty restricted for that, would AC units in the kitchens be a part of, would that be an allowable expense?
I, I would have to double-check to make sure, but I believe they are. I believe, because anything that has to do with a kitchen renovation can come out of that, because it is to provide food to our children and the safety of the staff.
It sounds like it would be a, a good expense for that. I mean, because I know I see a lot of ovens and different devices. I know it may be because it's affixed to the building, but we're talking about renovations of the kitchens. I feel like if we're buying equipment and we're talking about renovating, I feel like an AC kind of fits, fits in there just, just fine.
We could double-check the guidelines and get back to you, I believe, because it is for the safety of the staff and things of that sort. It may be, we may need to justify it, but we will double-check and get back to you on that one.
I appreciate it.
Give you the correct answer.
Thank you. Ms. Armstrong? No, go for it. Well, I gotta press a couple. By the way, you put my name in here wrong. Just saying. Amy's still.
Well, I don't know.
It's okay.
Okay, just, just, I'm trying to clarify. I'm not the best with budgets, but I do budgets a little bit. So, so, we're slated to get less revenue next year, right?
Yes.
By about 30 million?
Yes, roughly.
Okay. And we are budgeting to spend less. Am I correct?
We are budgeting our adopted, the adopted budget that was approved by the board is slated to spend more than this year.
More?
Yes, a little bit more.
And what, since it's slated to spend more, is that reflecting, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm hung up on this, but the salary increases in the professional development days and all these new positions, is that, is all that information is gonna be in there?
Those were included in the budget at the time of, we include budget, step-in column increase, to the best of our knowledge, what we believe it will be. So, those were included in the adopted budget that was presented to you a few months ago.
Okay. In objects codes, 5,000 and 6,000, I've noticed huge cuts. So, can you explain that to me?
So, the cuts happen to balance out your budget. If we see that the future is going to create a deficit issue, we are looking to see where we can save. One of the items that I know is not changing right now is staffing. So, I can't arbitrarily cut staff and salaries and benefits. So, then we have to look at our other options. Capital outlay, which are your big-ticket items, are not, there's not a lot being spent there. It's, in the millions, but comparatively, it's not as much as the others. So, we look to see where we can balance out our budget for the future years, so that we do not continue that projected deficit spending.
I don't know, we just, it's been following these, you know, I don't know, we just, it's been following these, you know, I've been following this, you know, the revenue expiring, all that stuff for years. I'm just, I'm just, you know, concerned about not having like all of the information, especially like for next year. I don't know. It, it just seems like, I'm just glad we have our new CBO. Maybe she can help us as far as like when it's, you know, managing our funds a little bit better, you know? Because we do, we have to manage a lot better, which is one reason why I voted no on the bond, okay? I mean, we, we have to, I'm just saying.
I didn't hear. What was it?
What I said? Okay, Amy heard it. I thought I heard it. I said, I said, I'm glad we have our CBO.
Oh, wait, hold on, sorry. Thank you for changing the name. Hold on, gotta press a couple buttons. All right, you're good.
So President, I just said that I'm very happy that we have our CBO because, you know, we've been, you know, stressed out about managing our funds for years now. And so, you know, I, and so, yeah, that's one, that is one of the reasons why I did vote no to the bond. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. I do have a comment, but Vice President Stewart?
As the person, I know that you weren't in charge all these previous years because we had a different CBO that was here, but as you being our expert here right now, do you think it's wise to ask questions when we approve the budget or two months later?
The budget is very fluid, so it does adjust. So I would say that both are correct.
But if I really had concerns and questions, I probably should ask them at the time we're discussing the budget. Probably right? You don't have to answer, thank you. I have one question. So books and supplies, I noticed that we budgeted 10 million and then we budgeted nine, oh, we, I'm sorry, we spent 10 million and then last year we spent 9 million, but in the past we've budgeted for 18 to 19 million, correct?
Correct.
So that's one place that we've actually got like 9 million because we're not spending $18 million on books and supplies.
Correct, in that category, it's not just books and supplies. There's materials, first half, there's other items that are in there. So the budgeting is there and it may not just come to fruition. So there is, there is a little bit of excess there.
Right, so there are different places that we're gonna have to look, and we know that, right? That we might have to make some cuts, but we're doing that in some of these locations already, correct?
We are definitely trying.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. I respond, I, I think just from being on, on this board for the short time I have, I think part of the reason some of my colleagues who have been on here a little bit longer have been stressed out is because we have an eight, a negative 800% accuracy in determining what is excess and what's deficiency. So if we, if we're always saying we're gonna be $35 million short and we gotta, you know, not spend this money, not spend that, and then we, turns out we're 5 million, you know, in the black, obviously that's gonna be a, you're gonna budget differently, right? I think it's about having like real numbers and having, you know, good projections so we can spend this money, this year's money on this year's kids. I'm all for fiscal responsibility and, and managing our money well, but when, when we have that, that kind of accuracy on our, on our budget, and then, you know, a cafeteria fund that's supposed to be at 300,000 and it's, you know, at pushing 7 million, it really, it makes nine. It, it, we're not putting, sometimes we're not putting the money where it really needs to go and we're, we're overlooking real issues that we, we need to invest in because of fear-based accounting that has been a past practice of this district for a long time. And as we move forward, I'm very confident in the staff that we have now, and thank you for being here, please stay. It's, I understand, I, I don't think that's why somebody wouldn't vote yes on a bond, and that's not what we're talking about here right now, and thank you for being in the middle of this, fun times. But when, but when we look at like what we can really afford to put from our general fund to our facilities, that's coming away from what we could be spending on our programs and everything else for our kids. So it is a huge disservice. And again, if, if, if all the colleagues took a walk on some of these campuses, they would not be saying what they've been saying, and people see it. Again, thanks for being in the middle of that. Any other questions, Dr. O'Hesson? Board Member Garza? Board Member Stewart? I mean, if you want, we can keep going, but.
I'm here on your time, so you guys let me know.
You're off hook. We appreciate the presentation and answering the questions.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, moving on to, let me find my spot. Major action. Moving on to Resolution 12.1, Resolution to Establish the Bellflower Unified School District.
I'm sorry, President Kretschfield. Yes, please back up to discussion item. You have a second discussion item.
Oh, okay. It's now time for a discussion item. Mrs. Acevedo. Wait, that's what I have here. I think my script is wrong. Oh, it's the next blue paragraph. Colorblind. Our last discussion item this evening is revised board policy 3350, travel expenses. I will now open it up for discussion. Do any board members have changes they would like to see in the policy?
Can I speak now?
Dr. O'Hesson, go for it.
Thank you. So the only thing I was looking at is, are we accounting for inflation when we ask for the minimum amount of expenditures for meals or for mileage?
That is a question for who, Dr. O'Hesson?
For staff. They created the board policy, right?
It's an existing board policy.
But it's being brought to us because it's been modified, is that correct?
This board policy, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Acevedo, has not been modified. This is as it is.
This is the proposed update from CSBA going through the global policy adoption. So this is the proposed update. And just to answer part of your question, Dr. O'Hesson, the updated food cost rate, for example, on expense claim, point number one, that is the updated government code rate of $75 per day. The current rate that we pay our employees is $50 per day.
Okay.
So yes, that has been considered.
Okay, that was my question.
Thank you, Dr. O'Hesson. Madam Clerk Garza.
Thank you, President Kretschfield. My question pertains to, one, two, three, four, the fourth paragraph in where it says employee shall obtain approval. Who, can we define employee, please?
So any district employee that's going to travel in a, a travel and conference event goes through an approval process?
So does that definition include board members?
You have specific language. If you scroll down a little bit further where it says guidelines for all employees and board of education. And then if you scroll down a little bit further on the bottom of page two, it says guidelines specific to the board.
So then we don't, we don't fall under that? Fourth paragraph?
The board is separated from the employee version and called out specifically down further on the page.
Okay. So I know, I, my next question would be, does PERS consider us employees and are we using that definition here?
Let me see if Dr. Smith can answer that, otherwise we'll have to get back to you on that question.
Actually, I, I can take that one. So CalPERS does not consider board members elected officials as employees, although they have that designation for certain things like benefits and retirement and so on, they're not actually considered employees of the district.
Thank you so much for answering my question. I have no other questions. Thank you, President Kretschfield and staff.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Any other questions from the board? I will say that one of the things I would like to see in this policy, and the reason we brought this policy, because I want to have a open, honest discussion with my colleagues here. Currently, there is no limit to how much a trustee can spend on travel expenses. We as trustees get a very modest stipend for being board members, but the travel can be abused, and I, I think that there's evidence of that, and I would like to put a cap on how much each board member can spend. So I would like to see in this policy a cap, and then if, if you do go over, I think any board travel should be approved by the board before travel or expenses, hotels, any of that's paid. So I would like to see preapproval from the board for any travel. I know that there's language in here with preferential to local conferences, so that's fine, but I'd like to see a cap of, I would say 12,000, which most board members don't even come close to, but I think that there needs to be some type of limit or else that there's, it would be easy to abuse that, and that's money that could be going to our kids, especially when we're saying we want to be fiscally responsible and, and make sure we're watching our, our cost. I think it's very important that we walk that walk. So I would say 12,000. Any, any other recommendations from the DICE? Ms. Armstrong?
I really don't have a recommendation to the amount because sometimes these conferences, you know, they are, they are costly. They definitely are costly. So I haven't, I would, I would like for the staff to at least look and see about, you know, because you have the CSBA and NSBA. So you have, so you have the national and you have, you have the state and you have the national, and then they have these subgroups like the California Latino education, and you have the, the California Association of the Black Educators. You have all these different subgroups, and then you have advocacy groups that, that we're all encouraged, even though I haven't been there, they always encourage us to attend the advocacy. It's called Coast to Coast. It's in Washington DC. They do it every year. As a matter of fact, O'Donnell, Patrick O'Donnell just spoke on this last Monday about, you know, getting all of us to, you know, go on, you know, go to the Capitol and, you know, and let them know that we need more funding, especially for special ed, that that's one funding that we still haven't really been compensated for us, our districts. So I, I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't have an amount, but there are certain things that I know our legislators want us to be involved in. I don't know. I would say have staff look at some of the options that we, we do have and let us choose on, you know, what we want to participate in. We don't have to do Coast to Coast. I've never done it before, but I know I go to the national and I go to the state, and then I go to the Caspi. And, and then we, because within this, I don't know, I go to the Latino one too. Myra's gone before. My colleague, Amy's gone before for one of them. It just depends. Why don't you guys just check it out and then come back with a suggested, a suggested amount that you think would be good for, for all of us?
So.
I wouldn't want to put a, I'm sorry, I wouldn't want to put an amount until they say, hey, these are the things that's, that's available.
Right, so I think that all, all the, all of the different conferences are, you know, they're voluntary for board members to go to, but this policy is a board policy that we would set that limit here, and I would appreciate, you know, any advice and guidance from staff to help us. But I think over the past few years, we've seen what these things cost and, you know, the, the occurrence of these throughout the year. I think it really comes down to, you know, as board members, I'm all for development, becoming a better board member and getting that information and bringing that information back here to the board to make better decisions for our district. I will say the last time this was brought up, we as a board decided that anytime you go to a conference, you would put what you learned in that shared folder and you would present it to the public of this is what I learned, this is what, you know, I took from that, and this is why it was valuable. And I think that was about a year ago, and I haven't seen it happen a single time, and that shared folder is still empty. And I just think if we're gonna say we're gonna do that, we don't do it, it's not a good thing to do. When we look at how much we're spending on that, I think it's really upon us to say, you know, what is an adequate amount of public funding for us to go travel and go to these conferences? And that's the question I pose to my colleagues. What is the number? Because I would like to see some type of limit or just everything is, the board approves it before we go and spend that public money.
President Kretschfield, would you mind me jumping in just a minute? If that would be okay?
Yep.
So if we scroll down to the bottom of page three, fourth paragraph from the bottom of that page, what that board policy says right now is funds budgeted for the board, travel and conference will be divided equitably for use between the five board members per the annual board budget. So for example, if you're throwing out the number of 12.5, what you're doing is you're multiplying 12.5 times five, because there are five of you. This is just an example. It also says, any member requesting travel and conference beyond the annual allocation require board approval prior to the conference registration. It also goes on to say that out of state travel must have board approval, and you know that because we've, we've done that recently. So I'm wondering if what you're looking for is more specific language in here or if this language is covering what you're wanting?
So.
Just for clarification.
Thank you for that. I think the language sounds nice, but I would say if we're gonna say we set a budget of 60,000 for all five board members and we say it's gonna be split equitably, that, that's what the previous policy said. And we had a very inequitable outcome. So how do we, the policy didn't cover that, so like how do we improve this policy to make sure that we're keeping this in check? Because for the past three years, from what I've seen and pulled on numbers, it's just, it's not equitable. And I applaud people that want to go out and go to these conferences and learn and bring that stuff back to our district. I, I'm great with it, but I don't see that happening, and I would like to put some type of guardrail on it. I'll move on to Ms., Vice President Stewart.
I had my hand up for a while.
So did I.
I'm sorry, Dr. O'Hesson. Yep.
Just let her go.
I can't see, so I didn't know.
Go for it, Dr. O'Hesson.
Oh, by all means, Vice President. Amy Stewart, continue.
Okay, thank you, Dr. O'Hesson. Vice President Stewart?
Mrs. Acevedo, is it true that every Friday we get the travel conference information where we can all see this information of how much everyone spends than we have for many years?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we have our numbers. If we read the Friday memos, we would have those numbers, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. So looking at that, you can see that, I think, I agree with him. I've looked at these, I've studied these for three years. I mean, it's very inequitable. There's one board member that spends what all the other four do put together, and so I would agree that a 12.5 cap on it would be perfect because looking at the conferences and looking at where it right this second, we should easily be able to do that. So I would agree to put a cap on it at 12,500.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. Madam Clerk Garza? Oh, Dr. O'Hesson, you're up.
Thank you. So I'd like to clarify two things. One thing is for the board budget, it doesn't come out of the, I want to clarify, it doesn't come out of student or taken away from student services. The board has a separate budget, is that correct, Ms. Acevedo?
That does come from the general fund.
And how much is allocated for the board on a, is it a yearly basis?
You approve your budget as part of the entire district budget. I believe right now in your TNC, you have about 65,000 budgeted for the year.
Okay. And then in regards to Board President Kretschfield? And then in regards to Board President Crichfield, I've posted several presentations that I know I had presented with Ms. Armstrong during CSBA, the California Association that we presented at. So that's not true. If other board members haven't been posting, I don't know. But I know I've been posting board presentations. I think they should, you should check before you make your comment.
I did check. And you've spent 80 bucks this year on your travel and you haven't, you haven't gone to any conferences this year. So I did check. Dr. Hessen?
No, I presented. I presented. I'm talking about, you said the folder's empty? It's not empty of presentations. That's what I'm saying. Unless.
If you had something in the folder last year, you're right. It could, it could be in there. What I'm saying is for the travel that's been done this year, I have not seen anything put in there. And also, we spoke as a board to present that, those findings and what we learned from those conferences at the board meetings to show that we're bringing that information back and how we're implementing it. I just don't see a lot of that. That's my main concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk Garza?
Thank you, President Crichfield. I agree with my colleagues, board member Stewart and our president. 12,500 is enough for us to travel. And if there is an extra conference that we, we see is going to be beneficial to our district, we should come and ask our colleagues for that extra amount. It's not hard. Just ask and we will all make that determination together.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Yeah, I mean, really, it doesn't substantially change. If we budgeted 60,000 and the, and the policy says it will be split equitably, I think putting the cap per board member just enforces that because without that cap, it can be very inequitable. And that's what I'm seeing. So I would, I would like to see cap of 12.5. And I think any out-of-state or anything over that 12.5 should be brought to the board. Hey, there's this conference. And honestly, it would be hard to find, you know, a lot of situations where you wouldn't say, yeah, if it's a conference you haven't been to, it's not the same conference that you've been to three times. It's a new conference and there's a need for it. And, you know, you want to come back and bring that information. I think it's great. We want active board members. I applaud it. We just got to do something with it. So I'd like to see 12.5 in the policy.
Would you like to make a recommended language change? Or would you like us to bring this back to you?
I'd like to bring it back for a second read.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Yep, oh, there it is. Madam Clerk Garza?
Thank you. Currently, do we have any language that says that board members must present what, like something that they had learned or brought back from the conference?
I believe that that was a practice that the board agreed upon previously.
Colleagues, would you like to have that in this new policy as it comes back?
I would like to see that. I would recommend the language. And if we can hammer out the language now and waive the second reading, if it's a pleasure of the board, I think that'd actually be better. I would like to see language saying, "Within 30 days of returning from travel, you present at the following meeting, you know, what you, what you learned and why it was valuable to the colleagues."
Okay, so do I have formal direction from the board of how you'd like this document prepared for the next meeting? Do you want to provide me some formal direction?
Yeah, so. Yeah, Vice President Stewart?
One thing, colleagues, that I want us to remember was that we talked about putting this in our governance handbook. That was one thing we wanted to put in. But that committee started in April and it hasn't been finished yet. So I don't know if we can have a meeting with that committee, if we can change the members of the committee and get it done. I don't know if we would rather put it in our governance handbook rather than on this policy. I don't know how that works. But I know I'd like to finish the governance handbook for sure. So I don't know if you guys would like to put it there rather than this policy just open for ideas and discussion.
I agree with Ms. Stewart. It to be put in the handbook.
Okay. As it relates to this policy, I do think the handbook would be a good thing to finish. And we did start it a while ago. Maybe that's something that could be in there. But who's on that? I think, okay. Now, do you have, do you have an estimated completion date for that? Sorry, hold on.
We were together. The last time we were together, if you can remember, Ms. Acevedo, board member Garza wanted to review some, some other things. And we were supposed to come back. And that just hasn't happened yet. So until she is ready to meet again, it won't happen.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Madam Clerk Garza?
That is true. We did decide to table it for a moment. But there's been so many things going on that we haven't been able to get on a date and continue that. There are also some other conversations that we need to have pertaining the governance handbook.
Great. Thank you both for doing that. I would like to request a update on that committee. Next board meeting, if we could. Vice President Stewart? Oh, yes, sorry. My bad.
So what I'm hearing is I think that it would be great to put that we bring back our, maybe I do it in board reports, but we bring back something in the governance handbook of what we went, we learned in our conferences. But I think in this policy, I would still like to see the 12.5 cap.
Yes. And just for clarification, if you don't mind me jumping in, we do need to have this board policy because it doesn't just cover the board. It covers all district employees. So yes, you can put something in the board handbook, but we need this board policy for the rest of your staff.
But the board approval part doesn't apply to the whole policy? The prior approval? That's in the first part, right?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So are you saying that both of those changes would apply to all employees?
No. No, I'm sorry, just this board policy. We need it for all employees. That's all I'm saying.
Right. Yeah, I would like to see the 12.5 cap. And then the language on reporting back and the board handbook that can, in addition to have that in there as well. But I think it's important to have it in policy. Is there anything else, changes, directions to staff? Vice President Stewart?
So you'll be able to add the recommended, you know, things that we want in there and then you can bring it back next meeting and we can approve it?
That's correct. It's going to come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Acevedo. Thank you, colleagues, for the discussion. We will now move on to major action. Item 12.1, Resolution to Establish the Bellflower Unified School District Foundation. Any comments from the board?
I don't know why, but I wasn't able, I don't know, I don't, I wasn't able to find like the details. Where am I not looking?
So actually, because it is a phase thing, so this is a, so the next meeting, if the board, if it's a pleasure of the board to move forward, that's when we go over like the bylaws, like the details. And that's what we'll discuss, that. But this is more of creating the nonprofit status and perhaps council can guide us there.
So there are several steps in creating a foundation. First of all, you have to incorporate as a corporation within the state. Then you go out and you get tax exempt status. Bylaws are drafted. The details that you're probably thinking about are actually in the bylaws of the foundation, which would ultimately get approved by the board at a later date. This is simply authorizing me to draft articles of incorporation that I'd file with the Secretary of State. And from there, seek the 501(c)(3) status, the tax exempt status from the IRS, after which the bylaws will be adopted by the board and approved. Because in theory, you guys are going to be the initial board members of that foundation. And then you go out and you appoint people to it that basically replace you as the board members for that foundation. And they take over from there and they operate as a separate entity. But the initial creation, you are the board. The bylaws will be drafted that you approve. That goes over, you know, the amount of board members that you appoint, the terms that they serve, the roles and responsibilities of the different officers within that foundation, that nonprofit corporation. And this is just the first step that allows me to actually get the process going.
Thank you, President. So thank you so much for that, Andrew. I was, you know, wondering, I'm like, I know I've been busy, but I'm like, why come I don't find anything? And then I was too busy to call and, and ask. So, so, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Dr. Hessen?
I have a question for Andrew. Isn't it a conflict of interest if board members are serving on the, on the foundation and on the board at the same time?
So it's not a conflict of interest because you're initially creating the bylaws, after which you will be withdrawn from the board and the individuals you appoint will become the new board members. But you have to be there initially to create those and then transfer that to the new people that you nominate and appoint at a later date.
I see.
Thank you, Dr. Hessen. Any other comments from the board? Thank you, Andrew, for, for getting this resolution to us. A foundation isn't going to fix any problems just by forming one. You know, anybody can go, I mean, it's a lot of work, but foundations form all the time. But the success of it's really about the community. And especially with the, the bond not getting to be on the ballot and looking at all the things that we need to do in our schools and supporting our students, our athletics. I think it's really important to create that avenue for people to give back. And it, it shouldn't be difficult to support our schools and our kids. And since in the past, you know, four years, I've heard a lot of stories of it just being more difficult than people thought it, it should be to donate, to give back to our schools. And this is a way we're going to minimize that barrier and open up that avenue. And I think how we start this off, when, when the board does consider those bylaws, I think it's going to be very important how we start it. And then also, it's going to really, really require a, a foundation or a board is only as good as the individual members of that board. You know, some boards are just high-functioning and they can fundraise and get people excited and engaged. That's what we're really going to be looking for in the community of, as we form that, that initial board, people that really have a passion for our district and our students and want to make it successful. That first board, those people that start that, it's so important that it's the right people. So we're going to be looking for those movers and shakers in the community and, and making sure that it gets up and running. And, you know, it might not happen very fast. It might be a slow growth at first. But my, my vision is that we, as board members, can look back on it in just a couple of years and just know that, you know, we, we did that together. And it's something that we did for our, our community. And we're going to see the rewards of the work that that foundation will eventually do. So I'm happy that this is before us. I'm in support of it. And with that, I will ask for a motion. Ms. Stewart?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Stewart and a second by Ms. Armstrong. So I got to get faster at this. It's a work in progress. All right, a motion by Ms. Stewart, a second by Ms. Armstrong to approve item 12.1, Resolution to Establish the Bellflower Unified School District Foundation. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Armstrong?
All right, I'm going to be fast, hold on. Cauliflower.
Dr. Hessen?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. New system, new system.
What's going on?
Aye. We're voting on, President, tell her what we're doing.
Oh, we are, we are, we have a motion by Ms. Stewart and a second by Ms. Armstrong to approve the Resolution to Establish the Bellflower Unified School District Foundation.
Right. And so she's doing roll call, but you're also talking. So are we doing roll call?
We are doing roll call.
Okay. I say, you called my name right. You ready?
Yes. Dr. Hessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have any items to withhold from the consent agenda this evening? Ms. Armstrong?
Did I say so?
Oh, no, it's, your button's on.
Oh.
You're good? All right. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
You guys didn't have one to pull, no?
We pulled it in the very beginning.
Oh, sorry, I wasn't here, my bad.
That's okay.
Oh, I.
I motioned.
Yeah, I gave Christian the, the safe word, cauliflower. So now your mics are just on all the time. It's too much button pushing for me.
I motioned to approve.
Motion by Vice President Stewart?
Second.
Ooh, a tie. A second by Madam Clerk Garza. Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Hessen?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye. All right, moving on to board communications. We will go ahead and start with Board Member Armstrong.
Okay, so I attended, welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming out. And I hope everyone's really, really excited about, well, this is my fourth week in school. This is the beginning of my fourth week. It's Bellflower's third, right? Yeah, so anyway, this, this year is going by fast for me. So anyway, I attended the back-to-school night for Somerset, Bellflower, and Mayfair. At Somerset, I took up a conversation with two teachers, one government teacher and the other is an RSB teacher. And, you know, both welcomed me back anytime that I'm available. We had a wonderful conversation about what was happening at Somerset. And Bellflower is like home because, you know, like my five children, being active in extra activities. I just have my last one, she's a senior, you know, really active. I was looking at some of her pictures. She was in some of the pictures in the presentation. But she's my last one. And so it was like, like I say, like being at home. And Mayfair, I especially enjoyed the band. I am a band mom. And I was really excited because Stephen was one of my band babies when he was just, you know, like in the ninth grade. So just seeing all the kids grow up is just really wonderful. And I get a chance to see the parents and students at back-to-school. So I really enjoyed it. And I also can't wait for Mayfair to finish their program. Because, you know, like, like Bellflower and Mayfair, they kind of like halfway compete, you know? They, they, they compete to see who's going to get those first-place trophies. So I'm excited. That's, you know, if you're, if you're a band mom, you know what I'm talking about. So, but anyway, I also attended a special event titled, it was an exhibition. It was called "The Day Time Stood Still", which is an exhibition of the October 7th massacre that happened at the Nova Music Festival. It was, you know, it's, it's just bringing awareness as to what's happening across our world. I also attended the first meeting for our Los Angeles County School Trustees Association, which is a short call for, it's called LOXTA. And that's where I met Patrick. I mean, I, Patrick was a, he grew up like in Montebello. But anyway, he's, he's up with the legislation now. I spoke to him and Chris. And Chris Reeve, they're kind of like our representatives. So those are the ones who were like encouraging us to, us board members, to get advocacy training and to really get in touch with our legislative committee to find out what's really going on and how we can help push certain bills, you know, for our legislators to either vote on it or not vote on it. And learn more about governmental relations. And I mentioned coast-to-coast. He was like, you know, you guys ought to see if you guys can get active with the coast-to-coast because, you know, there is power in numbers. So anyway, that's about, that's about all I did. That was enough for these past two weeks. So anyway, thank you again for coming out. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Now we have Dr. Alhessen.
Thank you. And welcome back to after Labor Day. This is a short week, but the Monday kind of threw me off. Anyhow, I attended the back-to-school nights also for Somerset, Bellflower High School and Mayfair High School. It was a great turnout on all three campuses, good parent participation. I also recently attended the site council meeting for Somerset High School. And I'm happy to be part of the officers there in regards to vice chair, which I'm sharing with one of the teachers, Jill Adams. I also completed the certification through DSA, the Department, the State Department of Architects, which has to do with barrier removal for architecture barrier removal under the ADA. And it's designed to support schools as well as businesses in regards to becoming more accessible. I was happy about our student board members. I was hoping that we would have our board book available for our student board members so they would have a reference tool and also guidelines to follow. I'm excited about working with our future board members in regards to supporting current student needs and issues as we move forward through the academic year. I'm currently trying to recuperate, recuperate from, I'm going through some issues with post-polio syndrome. And so that's why I am not live on the camera, but I hope to be live soon again. At any rate, thank you and welcome back, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Alhessen. Madam Clerk, Myra Garza, you're up.
Thank you, President Crichfield. I also attended back-to-school nights with President Crichfield, our interim superintendent, and Ryan, Bonnie, and some other support staff. So thank you for joining us and walking us through those campuses. It was nice to see our schools, you know, full of kids again. But one thing that I did notice as I was walking around was the lack of well, the, so many repairs. Not lack, but how many repairs our facilities need. The chipping paint, the oxidizing, you know, metal pieces on our buildings. The, the, you know, the gum that, I don't know how long it's been there. I don't even know if we're going to get a power washed off of there or not. Might as well start, you know, connecting the dots and make some pretty picture on it. But it, on both campuses, I agree with the parent who came here tonight. I've been to other high school campuses and ours look like they need a lot of TLC. So it's unfortunate that, again, you know, we don't have an endless amount of funds. But I'm pretty sure that, you know, maybe two of our board members can help us find some ways to get that money that we no longer have access to through a bond. So it was very sad to walk those campuses and just see those items and things. Now, I also want to bring something to our staff. Is, I'm really interested in looking into maybe getting a program or a system or maybe even looking at our current substitute system with Frontline on how to maybe update our antiquated, outdated system of verifying PD. Perhaps maybe look into that. If there is a need for it, then maybe we can go ahead and bring something to the board at some point if my colleagues agree. It just seems like it just takes so long. And I've been, being an employee here, I can tell you that sometimes teachers forget. Sometimes people sign in and they don't turn in a time card. But there has to be a better way. So I know that we're going to find it. So that way, you know, maybe something online. Or, and I have spoken to Mr. Dr. Smith and interim superintendent Asaveto about this. But I really want to look into some type of solution for that. I think that we can do better at this point, especially, you know, with all the technology out there, if possible. And then also, I have a question for my colleagues. Board Member Armstrong and Board Member Stewart. Which one of you is the one on the LOXTA? Did we appoint to the LOXTA committee? Oh, oh, okay. I was just confused because I hear Board Member Armstrong report on it. So that would be, you know, thank you for clarifying that for me. Also, I know that Board Member Stewart, you go, right? You do attend all these meetings and Board Member Stewart, to LOXTA?
Are we allowed to do this during board comments?
It's probably best to not open it up for questions, but
Sorry.
So she was, she was asking Ms. Stewart a question.
Yes, not Ms. Armstrong.
But I think, I think we can get some clarification on who's on which committee.
Yes, because I was, I'm a little confused at this point.
We can get that back to you.
Thank you. So I'm also looking forward to the north and south side primary schools back-to-school nights. And I will try to make, get to every single school. But I'm always one short, so hopefully I will be quicker than the other years. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Vice President Stewart?
Good evening. First, I want to explain my absence at the beginning. I had back-to-school night tonight, so please excuse my tardiness. I hope everyone had a great Labor Day weekend. Because of unions, we have eight-hour workdays. We have equality rights. We have sick pay, two-day weekends, paid holidays, a retirement age and pensions, a merit system, collective bargaining, and so much more. So I just want to say thank you so much to our unions and for your advocacy. You guys are so appreciated. And I just wanted to take a moment and remind us of some of the accomplishments of our unions and that things that they have celebrated in our previous years. Just a few things, that was, I didn't really do much the last few weeks. I coached volleyball, so I've been a little bit busy on my getting back to school and coaching. But I am glad that we discussed the Governance Handbook. I think that was really important. And I'm disappointed, I know it's probably most important to me out of all my colleagues, but I'm disappointed that it's taken this long, so I hope that we can get that going. I'm not sure if this was discussed, but I would still like to receive the information on a forensic audit of our Business Services Department, especially since we have a new CBO coming in. I really want to see what we've done in the past because that's not a reflection of hers. So I hope that we can get that information soon. And then the last thing, I just wanted to get an update from our staff on Parent Square. I know for me and Paramount Unified, I'm a teacher there, I got three updates today from the district. I got a heat advisory, I got a bond committee because they're going for a bond. And I also got, they had a meet with the social worker. And it's such a good tool to use. You can send it to everyone that's in the district. You can send it site-to-site. I don't know if our teachers have been trained on that. I would love to know that. But I hope that at least some basic information, because it's such a powerful tool that we can use. And I'm not sure, I know we piloted, I know it's brand new, but I don't know where we're at with that. So just kind of where we're at, if they understand it, if we could even just send out some basic information to them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice President Stewart. A couple of things. One, back-to-school night at Mayfair, Bellflower High School and Somerset was great. Looking forward to, I don't know if I'm going to make it to all of them like, like Ms. Garza's going to. But I'm going to go to as many as I can next week for our elementaries. I also went to a really cool event. It was a parent appreciation night for Mayfair Wrestling. Coach EB and his coaching staff did an amazing job. And just to see, I mean, he had like a, he had a magician, a comedian, he had a like, it was like a really, just a above and beyond event. And it just goes to show how much he appreciates all the, his coaches and the parents that come out and support. It's a really great group of parents there and a really great group of kids. So I'm excited to see how they do this season. They always, they always do such a great job. I do want to say another thank you to Christian for getting these there's a learning curve, there's a learning curve, but we got it. I really do appreciate it. Also, we had a lot of issues with AC. And I just want to give a shout out to Patrick and your team. And Ms. Asaveto, we took it very seriously and it's a complex problem. I mean, we have, I think, 1,500 units, right? And it's not perfect, but I think that you're thinking outside the box and wanting to address the problem. And knowing that we all take the safety of our kids is the most important thing we can do. And I just really appreciate all the effort that went into that. So thank you, Patrick. And also, I got, we were walking around back-to-school night and I was happy to hear that the handicap loading at ILC got done. And we heard a parent talk about it and he was telling me that a parent who was a drop-down kid literally cried. It's amazing how just, you know, a slab of cement can impact a site and then the experience of a parent and them feeling valued and heard when there's an issue. So again, you and your team, thank you. Also, let me see. Met with Michelle and Dotu. Thank you for always collaborating and listening. And I was on the phone with Carrie today. I really do appreciate our partners and stakeholders and always bringing issues to us and working with us. I feel the culture change over the past, you know, so many months. And that's a large part due to your willingness to collaborate, but also Ms. Asaveto, you know, Ryan, the whole team. I really do like what I see from that front. I would like to direct staff, we talk, especially after the bond failed to get past our board. We talk a lot about declining enrollment. I think this year we lost like 500, give or take, students. It's an issue. And what districts will usually do is create a master plan, master facilities plan, and really look ahead five years and look at the trends. And right now, the trends are not, they're not changing over the next few years as far as what ChatGPT told me. So we have to have discussions and we have to make sure that we're utilizing our facilities in a way that's manageable and fiscally responsible. The bond, I think, would have definitely helped some of these decisions. But I'd like to direct staff to to form committee, an ad hoc committee. I would like to be on that committee. And also, if she's willing, Ms. Garza would be on that committee as well. We'll work with staff and informing that committee and starting to have those discussions. Let's see. Yeah, I think that's basically it. I'm really excited about the foundation starting. I think it's going to be a lot of work. It's going to take a lot of community input and collaboration. Really excited about all the things that we're doing here and the work that we're putting in. And I really appreciate the conversations here on the dais tonight and excited for our student board members. And thank you all for sitting through. You guys have anything better to do tonight? No, it's fun. I appreciate you being here. All right, if there's nothing else. Does the board have any questions on the informational items? All right, hearing none. If there's no objection, this meeting is adjourned at 8:25 PM until the next regular board meeting will be held Thursday, September 19th, 2024. Thank you, guys. Have a great night.